Along at the bottom of the page. So I just didn't know how you wanted to handle that because I am not going to vote. And I don't know if that, those corrections need to be pulled off or if they're just incidental.
Staff, any correction needed on those?
We can correct them before the council meeting so that we have the correct information in there.
All right, sounds good. Councilor Akval.
Actually, that, just to kind of piggyback on that, it's interesting. Because I realized, having read the minutes, that we didn't have a full council that night. You know, the night that we have the minutes for. So is there a problem for us? I think I'm the only person that was at the meeting that we're referring to. So can we pass it with?
Yeah, I think we talked about this last time. It's a meeting of the body, not of individuals. So you can still vote on them as long as you read them.
Okay, okay. So that's good clarification. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? All right, seeing nothing else for questions on consent or agenda items. Why don't we proceed to our, let's see, I guess, council concerns? Anybody concerned about anything at all in this topsy-turvy world we're in? Nothing out of the ordinary? Counselor West, was that a yes or?
It's 2020, so we can't say nothing out of the ordinary. But no, I have no concerns.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's go into our work session items then as scheduled, starting item A, the I-5 pedestrian bridge update. Mr. Weigle.
Oops, before we do that, can I introduce you?
Yes, you can.
You forget about your mystery guest already? So I have here at the podium Ryan Adams, who is our new Assistant City Attorney. He starts a week from today, but he came in the office today almost straight from Kosovo, where he's been for the last year. And I'll let him, I'll let you each introduce yourselves to him. And then I'll let him tell you a little bit about himself.
Mr. Adams, welcome, welcome. Awful glad to have you here. And it might be as exciting as where you've been, but we do quite a bit of work here. You may find a few things. Glad to have you aboard. I'm Nap, I'm the mayor, but you'll only be working with me through the end of the year. And then you'll get somebody new.
It's great to meet you.
Yes. Counselors, Counselor Akval.
Sure, thank you. Thank you for joining us. It's a pleasure to meet you virtually. And I'm Kristen Akval. I am the council president. I was elected in 2016. So I am finishing my first term here on council. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be involved in this way. And look forward to working together. I love Wilsonville and I, I hope that you share a great love for our city as well. Because there's a tremendous amount of great things happening here. Thank you.
Great.
Counselor West.
Hi, really nice to meet you. Welcome aboard. I look forward to having the opportunity to work with you. I was elected to the city council in 2018. And it's been a fun and wild and exciting ride. I, well, I think I can speak for everyone and say that we all very much love this community. We love this city. And we hope that you also have the same affinity for it that we do. We think it's a pretty special place. And with all kinds of exciting city policies and all that stuff. So I look forward to working for you, with you in the near future and going forward. And I thank you for choosing to work here at the city of Wilsonville.
Great to meet you.
And Counselor Linville.
I also want to give my welcome to you. I'm Joanne Linville. I was appointed to the city council in September 2019. I have just recently completed a full year. I will be in this position until December 31st. And unless, unless something else happens. And so I am, we're delighted to have you. We hope that you don't have a lot of work to do here, that things are very quiet. And, and we have a quiet 2021 and not anything like 2020. So welcome to Wilsonville, welcome to our city family. And we know you'll get settled in and be welcomed officially by everyone there. So thank you for coming.
Thank you all very much. My name, as, as city attorney said, my name is Ryan Adams. I am, I've been practicing for the last few years in Canby, Oregon. And I was on the planning commission there as well. For about the last year, I've been stationed in Kosovo. I'm a JAG attorney with the Army here in the Oregon Army National Guard. And so I deployed earlier this year. And actually did the entire interview process via Zoom from my barracks room. So that was an experience. Was able to accept the job offer. And then the commander there allowed me to come home a little bit early to start. So my, my soldiers are still back in the rear, but we're here. And I'm excited, excited to start. And it's a pleasure to meet each and every one of you.
Well, thank you very much. And you'll meet Counselor Lehman soon. She's out of town today, but she is one of the most experienced members of our, of our group also. And I'm sure that that will come soon. Question from Counselor West.
Quick question, do you know Eric Zimmerman in Kosovo?
I know Eric really well. Eric and I are good friends, yeah.
He's a good friend. You just, when you said military in Eric, so he's serving abroad right now. He's a close family friend. And that's kind of weird, but welcome aboard.
Yeah, well, if you, if you talk, yeah, I actually, he, he's obviously in city government as well. And so, you know, we had a lot of, we had a lot of conversation about coming to work at Wilsonville. So yeah, that's small world, how about that?
Literally a small world. Well, yeah, welcome anyways. We can talk about that later offline, but I had to ask really quick. It was too much of a coincidence.
Good to meet you guys.
Welcome.
All right, sounds good. Well, now let's go to work a little bit here, I think, if we could. And we will proceed accordingly. Weigle.
Good evening, Mayor Nap and council. My name is Zach Weigle, Capital Projects Engineering Manager. And with me tonight is Kim Rabel, the Senior Planner. And also via Zoom, we have our members of our consultant team, Bob Goodrich with Dowell, and Alex Doopy, and Casey Howard with MIG. So before you tonight, we have the I-5 pedestrian bridge project. We last met in July about this project, right before we were going to go to the public with three bridge design alternatives in August. That public outreach has concluded. And Alex and Casey are going to walk through a short summary of the outreach that was done and the feedback that we got on the project. And some of the items that we need from you tonight are a key decision point in this project and a really exciting milestone for the project, determining which bridge design to move forward in design. So selecting that preferred bridge is on the agenda for tonight. We have a resolution ready for you if you are ready to make that decision tonight as well. So just a note there. And then some other feedback.
So Zach, we, we need to clarify because we cannot make decisions in work session. And we, if the council is, feels ready based on our discussion work session, we can bring a decision forward under Mayor's Bit in the meeting to actually make a decision. The other possibility is that we will not feel ready to make that decision. It has not been publicized on the agenda as a decision point tonight, which is one perhaps consideration to make. But we need to hear the presentation. And then the council will need to figure out where we collectively are in, in our thought process. So please go ahead.
Thanks for that clarification. And then the other two items that we're looking for your feedback on are, so we have some recommendations on how to proceed with the plaza design based on the feedback we received. And then also on some of the bridge and plaza elements to prioritize as we move forward in the design. So with that, I'll let Alex Doopy go ahead and get started.
Great, thank you, Zach. Casey, do you want to share your screen? Appreciate it. All right, well, Casey's bringing it up. Thank you for having us in tonight to talk about this project. It's good seeing everybody again. Once again, my name's Alex Doopy. I'm with MIG and the Consultant Project Manager for this project. Excuse me, the MIG Project Manager for this project. We actually are working with Dowell Consulting, who is the bridge lead and the consultant project manager. And Bob Goodrich is on the line as well to answer our specific bridge questions that we have for this, as well as Melissa Erickson on the design side. And so we're going to step through the public engagement results from both the public forums that we've had, as well as the online survey. We have a couple of questions for you that we'd like to have you think about tonight as we're stepping through the presentation. Casey, next slide, please. There's actually three questions. So as Zach mentioned, we are getting to the point now where we need to get actually into the specifics on the type of bridge to move forward into design. We currently have three alternatives right now. We've gotten some great input on all three. We need to bring that down to just one bridge, bridge design to move forward. We have a number of ideas for the plaza design approach that we need to advance into design. We've gotten some good public feedback for that, that we feel that we can certainly sort of focus that more. Again, getting into more specifics where we can get into more refined design and process and explore that. And then with the other piece with plaza is identifying a specific element. Now, there are some things that we can't change. A bridge has to have certain function, a plaza has to have certain function. But there are things that, that we can treat as unique elements, both with on the bridge and the plaza. And so we want to talk a little bit about that tonight, too. That's going to help us as we move forward into the more formal process in the fall and winter. Next slide, please. Just to give you a quick snapshot in terms of the amount of public engagement we got for this project. To be honest, I was pretty excited about the results from this. We had almost 300 survey participants for a fairly extensive big old preference survey for both plaza and bridge elements. It was provided in both Spanish and English. We had about 50 or so virtual open house participants. And we did, because we had to do this online, we actually offered that at three different times on the same day. So we were able to capture a number of different folks who may not be able to make a night meeting, but lunch, for example, was wide open to people. So we got a good amount of folks at various events throughout the day. And we were able to increase participation, particularly on the survey, by two and a half times what we received in the first survey. So the outreach that the city staff have done to make sure this project is visible was definitely successful on this, on this go around. Just some quick snapshots, about 92% live in Wilsonville, which those are the folks that are going to be the most interested in this project, so that makes sense. And then we also had a good break between both ownership of homes as well as renters. And so we do see, I mean, the majority of people who responded to the survey are homeowners. But we also got almost a quarter of people who are renters as well, too. And that's typically a very hard group of folks to get to for these types of projects. And so we were happy to see that we had almost a quarter of the respondents were renters, in addition to the three quarters of homeowners. So that's just a quick snapshot. We can go into deeper, deeper dive with the demographics. And we have that in the survey summary. But I just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of the people that have been part of this process to date. A couple of things, what we asked for this is we asked during the survey, we had some open-ended responses or questions for things that we should be considering as a part of this bridge project. Overall, a very high support for the project, which was great to see. People were very interested in, you know, the, how this, this project can increase health, the safety, the access that it provides, you know, the specific design elements, questions that we'll be talking about in just a moment. But there are, you know, questions around cost. And, you know, some people just don't support the project. And we certainly heard that as well, too. I will say that isn't a minority, the people that supported it. But we definitely heard concerns about costs as well as, you know, thinking that this may not be the right project for the city. Next slide, please. So I'm going to step through the bridge alternatives quickly. If you do have questions, feel free to stop. If I can't answer them, I'll turn them over to Bob or Noah, Casey. But as you remember, if you took the survey or were at one of the forums, we have three specific alternatives for the bridges that we have vetted over the last several months. And the three are tide arch, modern artistic, and cable stay. And the results from the survey and the forum, it's pretty clear that tide arch, you know, was strongly supported by, by the community. But modern artistic as well was also strongly supported. And I think that the key difference to think about between tide arch and modern artistic is that there's no, my tide arch had a lot or somewhat support. Modern artistic had a really lot of really strong opinions that liking the structure, but also strong opinions not liking the structure. And so whereas tide arch was more, more uniform in terms of support, modern artistic was kind of, I really love it or I really don't like it. And so that's, that was an interesting thing to see about that. But if you look at where modern artistic and tide arch came from, I really definitely like this, the results are almost the same. It's really just that, that middle ground there. Cable stay also had a strong amount of support, but not to the degree of the other two, of the modern artistic and tide arch. So that's not, I wouldn't say a distant third, but it is definitely a third in terms of priority or ranking in terms of the bridge types. Next slide, please. And then when we think about kind of the identifying themes and what that, you know, we talked about early on in this project, you know, how does this type of project evoke Wilsonville? And some of the early themes that came out from February, you know, harmony with nature, family-friendly, well, I'm at River and Booz very inclusive and welcoming. Those are types of themes that have been integrated into these bridge designs, also the plaza as well. What we found is that still the tide arch and the modern artistic bridges are still arising to the top compared to the cable stay. And particularly for this one, modern artistic especially, starts to evoke those themes that from that early public outreach in January and February had identified, really starts to bring those themes, you know, to the front in terms of the design process, or to this overall design. And the tide arch is there as well, too. But it's definitely, it's definitely or a somewhat, as opposed to a very strong feeling with the, with the modern artistic. When we look at the order of preference, we asked both the survey respondents as well as community meeting goers what they thought in terms of first, second, or third choice. Both the open house and the online survey, the first choice was the tide arch. But we also saw the modern artistic a close second behind the tide arch. Although you'll see between the first and the third choice, if you look at the online survey, that modern artistic starts to show that love-hate relationship with that, with that alternative. You either really like it or you really don't like it. And so that's an interesting kind of, kind of comparison between how old people think about that specific alternative. But overall, tide arch and modern artistic are still rising to the top, particularly the tide arch. But just as a, as a summary, when we look at the three bridge types in that iconic or defining structure, the tide arch and modern artistic are, you know, coming to the top, particularly the tide arch. Themes that evoke Wilsonville, modern artistic scores a little bit higher, but the tide arch is there as well, too, followed by the cable stay. And then when we look at the overall ranking, and the lowest number is the highest ranked. So if we look at the rank by preference, the tide arch and modern artistic, excuse me, the tide arch is the highest, modern artistic is right about in the middle. And then the cable stay comes behind on third. So we have pretty much an equal ranking between the two in how they, how they are ranked. But again, the tide arch overall is ranking the highest. Of course, yeah, everybody likes the most expensive project, the expensive option. And so tide arch, and again, these are very preliminary ranges of cost. The tide arch is more expensive than the others, although I think particularly the modern artistic, there's a lot of different variation potentially within that, that alternative. So when we look at these costs, it really comes down to types of materials, how it's designed, you know, other elements with modern artistic is a little bit more, has a little bit more options compared to some of the others. But overall, you know, cost range is between $7 million and about $10 million for, for the three bridges. So as a part of the bridge type, as I said, you know, some pieces of the bridge, you know, we can't change. You know, the bridge components are, you know, that's what they are there. They make up the structure of the bridge. But we did, there are a number of pieces that you can customize on a bridge. And so we asked meeting goers and survey participants, you know, what some of those key elements are that they thought were very important to make sure that we, we included. And overall lighting were the top two choices, whether it's illuminated structure that had the highest response, but also other types of lighting, whether it's along the cables or the railings, you know, other types of lighting that, you know, that could do a number of different things, but that really provide that 24-hour visibility of the bridge, but in a creative and artistic way. The third vote getter, custom face fencing, that's another piece that, you know, could tie well with any of the alternatives. But those are the types of things, the top three, that really started to come out as kind of, you know, high interest in terms of the community. Others had votes as well, too, but not to the degree of those top three. With this, I'm going to turn it over to Casey to talk about the, the alternatives for the plaza.
Thank you, Alex. So for the plaza, we'll just touch pretty briefly. We have three options here. And for the plaza, it's more of a kit of parts approach. So we're mixing and matching these elements to come up with the final design. But we did present these three different variations to help people visualize what the final products might look like and maybe inspire them to think about the kind of qualities that they're looking for in this space. So on the plaza options, the drops and ripples and the river Oxbow both came in pretty high, pretty much neck and neck in the ranking between the themes and the ranking by preference with the gateway loop, which is the spiral ramp approach coming in third pretty clearly. And this is consistent between the online survey and the open house. And then in terms of the plaza components, we did a visual preference survey essentially. And the things that are rising to the top here in terms of art are that people are drawn to things that are interactive and functional with multiple installations and possibly murals or mosaics. For sustainable features, they really gravitated towards sustainable planting options. So planting for biodiversity, providing habitats, climate-adapted plants, which are low maintenance, low water, or enhanced stormwater planters. And then in terms of the style of planting and trees, people really gravitate towards this more formalized, high-designed, very clean, incorporating tree alleys, formal planting areas, and green walls. And then for providing shade and rain shelter, people gravitated towards simply utilizing a tree canopy or possibly having a modern artistic-style shelter. And they shied away from the more traditional, technical shelter style. For gathering spaces, people are really drawn to having multiple smaller spaces where they can stick quietly and have some privacy or have small groups rather than a large, open, hardscape area, which ranks pretty low. And also they were looking towards transitional spaces, which would be more of a linear pathway with bench seating on the side so that it's more focused on movement with some resting along the way. And for the bridge approach, which is the ramp, people more than anything were drawn to providing some sound and visual buffering from I-5s. So that's really important to them to try to have some separation from the highway as much as possible. While we acknowledge that this is next to the highway and we can't really change the location, that is something that we'll definitely be looking to incorporate in the design. And then people also were considering having a swooping ramp with some landforms to kind of soften those edges and making it a little more natural and less blocking. And so when we went to the planning commission, we did touch on a few questions here. We asked them to identify which bridge alternative best reflects the project's themes and priorities. And they collectively leaned towards the tide arch. There was a little bit of concern about costs and upcoming budget cuts, potentially your, I guess, a bit of uncertainty with the economy essentially. But also acknowledging the perspective that this is a project that will outlast us all. And so that couple of million dollar difference between the tide arch and some of the less expensive options really disappears over time as we look at 50 to 100 years of the lifespan of a very iconic project to Wilsonville. And then in terms of the bridge elements, they agreed with the feedback from the public, that custom lighting and custom safety fencing are good options. In terms of the plaza, they did agree with the approach of combining the elements of the drops and ripples and river Oxbow into a single design concept. With a little bit of conversation about how that might look in terms of the style, if it's contemporary or more reflective of the natural character of Wilsonville. And I think it's, it's just important to provide a visualization of how that might come together and then really reflect on the voting from the public on these individual elements to guide the design. And in terms of adding any other plaza elements to consider, they said no. They were happy with what had come out of the survey results.
And so with that, so that's, that's just a quick snapshot of, you know, the public, the public process, you know, what we've been doing over the past, you know, about three months or so. The survey was open for about a month, plus the three open houses. And then the input from planning commission, which I think was generally aligned with what we heard from both the open houses and the survey. But it comes down to these questions for, for you to help move, move the process forward. And so we'd like to be able to discuss, you know, which alternatives are most resonate with you as a council. And then to talk about that plaza approach, if you agree with, with the recommendations from planning commission. And then also talk about those specific priority, bridge and plaza elements. If you're in agreement with planning commission or if there's other pieces that we should, we should consider moving forward. So with that, I want to thank you for the time tonight to talk about this. And happy to answer any questions if that's your plan.
Okay, council, any questions for our experts on this bridge project? Counselor Akval.
Thank you. And thanks for your presentation. Good information to have. And I appreciate also all of the community participants that, you know, were involved in the survey and multiple open houses and things like that because that helps feed into the decisions that we need to make now. I was hopeful that you could provide a little bit more specific information on maybe two or three points. In your presentation, I think you made a, a quick reference to that this, this bridge will outlive us all or outlast us all or something of that nature. I wonder if you could explain what is the expected lifespan, I guess, of this bridge? And does it differ between the, the different models that we're considering? And then also, another question would be, you know, as, as I hear feedback from the planning commission and community is being sensitive to the costs as we make our plans. One cost maybe that isn't referenced in our packet as much is what are the maintenance costs? And does that differ, you know, according to a different design? Or would one bridge need to be updated in time? Or in one, another bridge would be more kind of lasting, I guess, in their design or design elements or materials or fixtures, you know, that is part of the bridge itself? So I kind of wanted to, to consider some of those things with that information in context so we could think about the cost of the bridge over the lifespan of the bridge. Thanks for, for the information to help tackle some of those questions.
No, that's great. Those are great questions. Bob, I think those are directed to you probably. No, that's great. Those are great questions. Bob, I think those are directed to you probably.
Sure. Yeah, thanks. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for the opportunity to be here. So I guess tackling the two questions that you asked, the life cycle, lifespan of the bridges are not substantially different. In terms of serviceable life, there's about 75 years, maybe up to 100 years depending. And that doesn't really vary across the three bridge types. In terms of the, I guess, what I'd call visual lifespan of the bridges, and this kind of gets to, will kind of transition to the second question, the modern artistic bridge, the look and the feel of that bridge is made, is composed of different appurtenances and features that are added to what is essentially a pretty conventional bridge, that are made up of different materials, coatings, paintings, not paintings, but paint and coatings, that are more susceptible to environmental conditions over time. Whereas the cable stay and tide arch bridges are more intrinsically, the visual features of those are more intrinsic to just the form and the shape and the function of the, you know, pylons and cable stay cables, or the, you know, arch ribs and the suspenders. And so the visual lifespan is maybe where you get into a little bit of difference. And that lifespan could be kind of equaled out over the course of the 75 years, but would incur some additional, potentially some additional costs for maintaining that, the look of that modern artistic, like the rendering show the blue, you know, sinuous form over the top. And that, you know, looks great, but that, you know, that, the color and the, you know, patterning could be, you know, susceptible to more environmental degradation over time. And so looking long-term on what the cost differences are, the maintenance of the three bridge types are pretty similar. And Zach, I think, has a little information from the city of Eugene that he can share in that regard. But really, the cost difference would be whatever that additional, you know, maintaining that visual form and appeal of the modern artistic over time. That would be the big cost difference, leaving the initial construction cost and moving into, you know, 10, 20, 50 years down the road.
Yeah, thanks, Bob.
I guess to kind of, oh, sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna, I was just gonna add a few things. We did some outreach with Eugene a while back. City of Eugene, they have four bike and pedestrian bridges of varying styles. They have a cable stay, they have a suspension bridge, and a couple of more of your typical, simple-style bridges. And they, you know, the maintenance costs are pretty low for a pedestrian bridge. They estimate it, you have to have it inspected every two years. They were estimating at that time, each bridge is about $350 to inspect. And then as far as the maintenance costs, they were, they were looking at about $1,000 per year, per bridge, for the cleaning and sweeping, repairs, lighting, all that kind of work. So I also went, and, you know, our budget book also includes maintenance costs and assumptions for each project. And in there, it's about $2,000 per year is what is anticipated. So, you know, compared to a roadway, a bridge maintenance is pretty low, if that helps answer your question.
That is interesting. And I wonder, you know, some of your comments, Mr. Goodrich, about the ornamentation, I guess, maybe with the modern artistic design, you know, when we're looking at kind of the cost comparison for the three different models, I wonder, it might be helpful to go back to that slide. But as you pointed out, I guess, the tide arch bridge, the design feature is so strongly in, like, the form of the bridge itself, you know, versus this ornamentation. So if we were for a cheaper, modern artistic bridge, is it going to look more cheap than a cheaper tide arch bridge? Because maybe the value or the elegance is in the actual form itself versus the material that is being stuck on to the structure. Does that, that's probably a clunky way of putting it, but do you get what I'm trying to understand better?
Yeah, no, I think that's an accurate kind of characterization of the difference between the modern artistic relative to the other two bridge types. Is you could, you could reduce the cost or increase the cost of the modern artistic by changing the materials and coatings and whatnot. Whereas, you know, the tide arch is kind, it costs what it costs to get the form that you have. And whatever color, you know, we end up deciding to paint, you know, that would just be kind of a fixed thing. But yeah, ornamentation, I think, is a good word for the modern artistic, and what gives it that modern artistic look.
Thanks for the information. This is helpful and good points to consider. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilor Lindell.
Thank you for the presentation, and also all the documents that were in our packet. That was really helpful and kind of fun to look at. Certainly commend the city staff and the project folks for the amount of citizen input that we had. One of the things I wondered about in terms of the estimated cost, and I understand that they are really estimates, but I wondered if they included seismic upgrades that would make the bridge structure something that we would not have to do seismic upgrades to at a later date?
Yes, that is, that is correct. The bridges would be designed to modern, to current seismic standards. And there's really no difference between the three alternatives in that regard. That's just a baseline design criteria.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. West.
Thank you so much for your presentation. It's very well done. I can tell you guys put a lot of work into it. I have a couple questions. I, we talked paint colors and how beautiful it is, and it is beautiful, and different costs and stuff. I have some questions around cost. Do we have any idea, I know that some of this is Metro, there's a number of things I'm thinking about, and I see here on the bottom, there's things that we haven't totally even, within that 10 million, or six, seven to 11 million, I guess, we haven't, we have, we don't have design services in that amount. We don't have mobilization, traffic control, a grade path, a right-of-way acquisition, or plaza construction, which looks highly expensive too. So that doesn't include those items. How much is Metro grant covering this? And I just also, as the Oregon economy is in an utter downturn right now because of fires in the region, and because of COVID, and a lot of people are still tightening up those pocketbooks and their family budgets around the kitchen table, I just want to know how much this might cost every, the average Wilsonville family, if we were to take the cost of the total, which we need to know. It's hard to know without having a better cost idea. And what is that going to cost my neighbors, is a concern that I would love, I would love to know that information. And I don't know if we have that ready yet, but I think that's important to have. I guess I'll start with, that's my first question.
I might, I might weigh in on that real quick.
Thank you, Brian.
No, yeah, there's no cost to, well, if you're buying a new house in Wilsonville, then your portion of the transportation SDCs that's funding this bridge would be covered by that. But in terms of a cost per household, they're really, that would be extremely difficult to figure out. We could project how many houses we're going to build into the future, and what portion of our SDCs is going toward the building, the design and building or construction of that bridge, and make some guesses in that regard. But in terms of existing residents, unless people have bought in, and how long has that been in our transportation master plan?
It's been in the SDC analysis since 2017, 2016.
So I would guess that anybody that's bought a house from that time forward is buying into that particular project. That's kind of an oversimplification, because it's a very complex question, what you're asking. But the point I'm trying to make here is that this is 100% funded by transportation SDCs. So this is not competing for police, for parks, it's not competing for general administration staff, it's not competing for other road projects. It's simply a standalone project in our transportation master plan that is fully funded through transportation system development charges, and likely some other grants, should those become available through any form of stimulus or other things that might come forward. So there is no, there's no real accurate way to answer your question, other than to say that it's funded by transportation SDCs solely.
Okay. And so, and my other question is, is we haven't talked much on the Boone side of design, or that more complicated side of design. I know that we spent one, I think around 1.5 million, if I remember, I could be in that range, just for the landing spot over there by Regal Cinemas. And so I don't know if that's included, and I don't think that's included either in our estimated cost, that 1.5 million land purchase that we did. Was that also done through traffic SDCs?
No, as you recall, we used program income fund to purchase that property from unspent, unused urban renewal funds.
Okay, thank you for reminding me of that. Just, it's been a while since we talked about that piece.
Yep, no problem.
So we have to have two sides, we have to have two sides. And we haven't talked a lot about the Boone side. It's kind of a busy road. I, you look over there, and it's, it's more industrial business area, not a lot of urban place right there by, in that landing area. Is any of that appropriate to talk about yet? Like, what does that cost? Do we have to buy more land over there? Is that additional on top of all the rest of this? What does that look like?
So there's, there's limited options on that side. There's also quite a bit of right-of-way that we already have on that side. So as we move through design, we will be looking at what that looks like, and trying to limit the impact on those existing businesses as much as possible. So I don't have a clear answer for you on that right now, but it is something that we will have as we move forward.
Okay. And one other thing, I had a neighbor call me really concerned about, and I actually agree with her on a design element, on the landing side over in the town center area, the part, and the land that we already purchased, that's going to be like a little park. The curl option, and she's, as a pedestrian, and then you have a bike coming around that curve, was concerned that we could have potential for an accident. And I remember when I was growing up in North Portland, and I would have to cross Goling Street, and we had a pedestrian bridge to get from my neighborhood over to Beach Elementary, I went to school, either side had kind of a curly queue kind of pigtail, a little bit like what we show in that example. And I do remember kind of kids' bikes whipping around that corner, and then there, you got to hear it was on a pedestrian walking too. I feel like for sidelines and safeties, especially being more available and accessible to most populations, we should consider the safest options, which is the least curly queue option on that design piece. And then I guess my other more detailed questions around funding, I can try to take offline, but I think that that's something that I'm really considering now before I'm really wanting to talk a lot more about design element. That's kind of where I'm at as a counselor.
Counselor West, I could address the question of the curl, the curl is, I know, I know the Goling Street pedestrian overpass, well, it's not a place you certainly want to be, especially if you're an Ohio Bike. And I think that was something that resonated, that was very clear with, from the public process as well too, that that was by far the least, that option was of least interest to the community. Both drops and ripples and, and more the path elements were ones that I think people resonated with much more so. And there were questions and discussions around safety for bikes and pets, particularly with, you know, the loop, that one, which is why I think it's scored, I think, let's say considerably lower, but much lower than the other two that we're, that we're looking at. So that would be, I think, you know, what you're talking about, I think it's consistent with what we've heard from the public as well too.
And, and Alice, would you agree that the price tag is actually much higher than what we're seeing here significantly?
In terms of?
All, all project and the whole, the total ROI, like, the whole thing? So like, the property we bought for that money, like, as a whole, Boone's side hasn't been quite put into this, all these other, you know, plaza construction, all the rest. So it is quite, it is significantly could be quite a few more million dollars than what we actually see on just the main bridge stand.
It's just for comparing the three bridges. It's not the total cost.
Yeah, this is the total cost for the project.
Okay, thank you.
If I can just, the cost ranges that you look at here, though, they do include the retaining walls and bridge structure to get up, if you're on Boone's Ferry, the bridge and retaining wall is required to get up into the air, to connect to whichever of these three bridges is selected, across, and then coming back down. That's, all those structures are included in this cost range. So there will be additional costs, but maybe not quite to the level that you're, you're thinking. So the structure cost in the plaza is what you're looking at there in terms of the ramps and bridges, that's captured in this cost range. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Okay. I feel like we've kind of wandered from what we were starting with was, you know, understanding of the presentation by the presenters, and moved into debate about council priorities or whatnot. So I, I would guess I would like to see if there are other questions specifically for our consultants about the, the technical aspects of what is being presented and proposed, and then we can kind of get into the discussion of, of council's priorities as a separate, or a next step. Is there anything else for our consultants specifically to address in order for us to have our understanding we need? I'm not seeing any other hands at this point, so I would do want to add my appreciation to the work that has been done, and I think it is significant. We do need to talk about, and we don't have too much more time on our schedule, so the question is, how close are we tonight to having understanding of these, and how comfortable is council about moving forward tonight on these decision points that are being asked? We, based on prior experience, I think could easily burn another 30, 45 minutes talking about what we think individually, which we have really not done very much. So, Councilor Lindell, you've had your hand up here. You have something on your mind?
Well, I just want to be clear about what we're being asked to do, because it appears to me that the question is not whether or not to build this, or whether or not it's going to cost a certain amount. It is to identify a preference of the design for the bridge component part and the plaza. That is simply it. And I guess in order to decide whether it is good for us to make that decision tonight, or if we wait and put that as an agenda item, my preference is to have it on the agenda as transparent as possible, unless we're up against a timeframe where we have time limitations based on the expiration of the grant, the design grant that we have. If there is time within that for us to put it on the agenda for a regular council meeting, that would be my preference.
Thank you. Other counselors, what are your, what's your feeling about the question that's just been addressed? Councilor West?
I agree with Councilor Lindell. I'm not quite ready to make a decision tonight. Can you hear me? Okay, I'm muted.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm not quite ready to make, I think, that decision. So I think that putting it on the future agenda allows for a little bit more opportunity for the public to weigh in on it too. I don't think we should put it on mayor's business tonight. I like the idea of just adding a little bit more time. I don't think we're in a big time crunch. I think I still have a few things I'd like to, a little time to consider as before we move it forward.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Akval, have a opinion from you?
I guess I could agree with that action. Going back to the original question of which design, I mean, I think, I appreciate keeping the focus there. Which design do we want to move forward? And I do think that the packet that you've supplied has quite a bit of information about the different designs, and the, you know, the pros and cons and things to consider of each of the design pieces. So I appreciate having that information. I also appreciate Councilor Lindell's comment on if we are making a decision, let's have it known. have it noticed and, um, on the agenda in that manner. Um, you know, I, I think that makes sense moving forward and, um, I guess one thing that we also haven't maybe talked too much about is, um, the planning commission's recommendation in all of this, right? I mean, so we have that information as well and, um, I understand they kind of landed on this tied arch, um, bridge type and, um, so it's good to have that information and, and their thoughts and conversation on how they arrived there as well. So I guess, I guess that's where I'd be at with the, the next step.
Okay. Doesn't sound to me like we're, uh, ready to make decisions tonight. I would like to, uh, make one particular statement here and that is, I would like the council to look at the pictures on page 34 of seven, uh, 417, page 40 of 417 and page 46 of 417. 34, 40 and 46, your packet. These are pictures of the proposed bridges that you will see from a human scale point of view, either walking somewhere elsewhere or in a car on freeway. While it's pretty, uh, what, blunt, buoyant to look from a drone flying, you know, 200 or 300 feet above the bridge looking down, that's not how we're going to see it very often. And my impressions of the three choices are quite different looking at it from a human scale point of view and perspective than they are from some of these others. We're going to come back and talk about it later. I, I'm just, um, encouraging council to think about that point, that, that, how, how are people really going to see these as they, uh, experience it, either coming through on the freeway or, uh, on the ground from the various vantage points in Wilsonville? So, um, okay, uh, I guess the other thing from staff then is, uh, given the, the feelings that council has, uh, do you have any issues with us putting this off then? Uh, and would we be talking about two weeks or what, what's staff think?
I would recommend two weeks. We are, we are under a time commitment with Metro on getting to a final design on this project, so, um, we, we want to make sure that you're comfortable making the decision you feel best, so, um, but we do need to get to a decision shortly, so.
Mayor, I, I would echo, echo that. I do have some concern about extending this out too much further. I think they've done a really good job of coalescing and giving some really good options, so this is, I think, our third time coming to council with this, so I would actually just request that we be ready to make a decision at the next council meeting so we can get down the road on design here.
All right. I think we can do that. Council, is that agreeable to everybody? A thumbs up or, yeah, I'm, I'm seeing that we can work with that, Brian?
Thank you.
If, if staff can, that would...
It'll be on the next agenda.
All right. Thank you, one and all. Thank you all your consultants for your work and information they've given us to ponder.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, next thing we have up is our LED street lighting version topic.
I believe Martin Montalvo is leading the staff on this one? And Dolora?
I sent an email asking for some more information. I was a little bit taken aback to be asked to approve a $478,000 contract without seeing the bids or, um, understanding what the range of bids were, and so I've asked that they might present some additional information to us here tonight.
Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir. We can't...
So, um, I'm going to share screen with you. I have a brief PowerPoint here and I will attempt to, um, answer your questions for you, Mayor. I apologize that the packet was missing a few documents as I was uploading the packet last week. I was also dealing with the, um, various emergency issues in the area, so apologies for that. Kim, can you, uh, authorize me to share screen? Okay, great. Here we go. So I'm going to go over with you just the generalities of the upcoming LED conversion project. This is a phase one of the project. Um, what we did was break out the residential lighting as phase two, that will be a much more in-depth, um, project that we plan to do, um, in the subsequent, uh, calendar year. And this project is focusing predominantly on the street lighting, the materials and collector roads. So the scope of the project is essentially, we're going to convert 950 of the Cobra head high pressure sodium lights. You'll see them depicted here. Um, this is actually Town Center Loop just near, uh, City Hall. And so we're going to convert the inventory of Cobra heads within the city to LED. Um, the construction is going to commence within, uh, the next 30 days with the anticipated completion of the project by the, um, beginning of the new, so it's September 31st, 2020 is substantial completion. We put the bid out. Um, we had to, we did an initial bid. We had to cancel the bid. There was, uh, an issue with, um, the specifications and interpretation of ODOT specs, um, that required us to basically pull the project back and repost it, so we made sure we got the product that we wanted in terms of, um, construction work and safety. When we reposted it, we did get two responsive bids. The low bid is for 478,500. Um, there was just a $700 difference or $7,000 difference from, um, the low bid and the, and the second bid. And overall, um, the engineering estimate was 513, so we're about 7% underneath, um, the engineering estimate, which is good for us, so it was a positive bidding climate. The second part of what you're going to get this evening is there's a, a resolution to approve the construction contract. There's also a resolution to make an amendment to the Murray Smith contract, which is our design engine. So Murray Smith was hired off of the on-call engineering contracts that we have. Um, those are allowed to go up to $100,000 before they have to come to the contracting board. As a result of all of the things that we've been working on, Murray Smith was taking on more of the lion's share of the project than we had originally anticipated. Unfortunately, my bandwidth in the last six months, as many of you know, has been predominantly focused on emergency management. So they agreed to help with taking on some additional services. Uh, and we've got to make an amendment to their contract and that now pushes it over $100,000, so I have to bring it to City Council for approval under the contracting board. The additional services, they can, uh, included additional plan sheets for clarity and, um, of design and try and mitigate some of the risk associated with the project, which I think that 7% difference between the engineering estimate and the actual bid kind of helped us with that. Um, they revised and reissued several of the bid, uh, questions and requests that came in. Um, they helped in completing the Energy Trust Oregon rebate, uh, application for us, which was something that staff was supposed to do, uh, but my duties didn't allow me to, to complete that work, so they, they agreed to take that on. I'll give you some more information on the trust here in a moment. And then they provided additional project management and coordination. So overall, their new contract with the amendment of 24,197 has been 122,349. I can't say enough for the team at Murray Smith. They really stepped up to help us get this project to fruition and I just want to make sure that they're being adequately made whole for the work that was conducted. So, uh, this project is eligible for Energy Trust, uh, grant, as will phase two. We expect a higher rebate in phase two, but in phase one, you can expect, um, from the Energy Trust calculations, an annual energy savings of 675,000 kilowatt hours. Um, this will translate, translate into just a direct energy saving of $77,000 annually. And we'll receive a one-time incentive grant, uh, once the project finishes construction late December of 65,812. Those are the slides that I had prepared and I will release the screen and I'm prepared to, if there are any questions you may have.
I was going to say, or before you do, Martin, uh, can, that, that lead slide is also your last slide, you know, shows two different lighting scenarios. Can, can you tell us what we're looking at?
Oh, so, um, this is an actual before and after. It's not here locally. Um, I forget which city it was that it was in the Midwest and I used a lot of their documentation for their LED conversion. The image on the left is high pressure sodium, but the image on the right is, um, LED. I will say that this was the first generation of LED conversions. Um, the lighting that you see on the right-hand side is, um, the 4,000 Kelvin scale. We are specking for 3,000 Kelvin scale, which is a much softer, um, white. It's not as yellow and amber-y as the high pressure sodium, um, but it's not as white and blue as what you, um, have, uh, from the 4,000 Kelvin. If you're interested as to what 3,000 actually looks like, drive on Town Center Loop anytime that the lights are on. As a pilot project last year, we converted all of the streetlights on Town Center Loop. They are already LED, 3,000 Kelvin, and we've also got some interesting internet of things that we're incorporating in those projects with the controls. Um, this project with the conversion will also allow us to start implementing some of those, um, control modifications throughout the city as well.
Okay. Counsel, questions for staff? Mr. Montalvo, on our first real significant move into the LED conversion process?
No questions? Okay. I hope my appreciation's good.
Counselor Linville, is there a question?
Well, I just, I'm really pleased. I didn't see anywhere in the, um, in the, uh, documents that you submitted, I, that what our savings was going to be, so I appreciate that you, that you brought that forward. Um, I saw that it said it was significant, but, um, I think $77,000 a year in annual savings is, is a little bit more than I even anticipated, so I really appreciate that you put that, um, that, uh, that dollar figure in. Uh, it certainly, from my perspective, makes up the difference in the project management and some of the other additional services that I think we're asking, uh, the contractor to, uh, to complete on our behalf, so, um, and, and given that I don't think COVID is going anywhere for a little while anyway, we may need to have you be doing some, some of the things that you've been doing, so, um, thank you. Very, very good, uh, information.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Other questions? Uh, Martin, uh, you and I had a conversation about the, uh, Wilsonville Road west of the railroad tracks. Uh, I, I think I see in the packet that the, the, uh, those current, uh, blue Old Town style lights are still included in this. Is that where we're at?
Um, that is. Uh, so the, the question come, came up during design as to what the limits of the Old Town district were. And, um, so if you are west of the railroad tracks, um, there are two separate planning documents that define the Old Town, um, limit as basically stopping at the railroad tracks. Everything east of there to the interstate was Old Town. Everything Wilsonville Road south to the river was Old Town. And the intent of the lighting, um, district that they had set up was to make that more distinct, to make them blue, to say you're in the Old Town district. Uh, there was a project in 2006 that had installed some, um, acorn-style, uh, blue lights west of the railroad tracks. So our analysis, because we, we looked at all of the lighting in the city, said that the acorn lights on that archy road, it's four lanes divided, heavily treed, um, that those lights are not meeting the engineering standard for safety and illumination. So we, during the course of the design, said it's outside of the district and it's not meeting the standard, the, the best thing to define the district and to provide for safety would be to convert these into Cobra heads. So they're part of phase one, uh, because we're trying to deal with all the Cobra heads in phase one. If council has, you know, it's your decision, if you want to defer that to phase two, um, if you want to remove that, it is an item that we can remove from the project and it won't have a substantial financial impact. Um, of course, I will have to work that out with the contractor, but, uh, but I don't think it would have a substantial financial impact for the overall project. It's 10 lights out of 950.
Uh, and out of that discussion, uh, of course, I've been in the Old Town discussions for a while, um, I, I started thinking about the, the, um, Old Town Escape Road that goes across the railroad tracks to the west, but will be, um, will have the pedestrian bicycle, uh, bridge, uh, features and whatnot that we have planned into that. And my question was, could we utilize those, uh, blue painted fixtures that match the Old Town along that piece of, uh, the, the extension that's being done? And would that be appropriate? Uh, and I, you know, I'm assuming though, nobody has told me for sure, that we can get LED heads for those blue poles if we were to choose to reuse them in, in such a scenario? Is that something you would know or not?
Um, LED conversion heads are available. I converted quite a few of the globe lights or the acorn lights back in the Oregon city to LED. My recommendation, if they're asking for, for, is spare parts for the LED acorns that we have. Um, it's very difficult to get the cobalt blue lights. They're a special order every time. No one keeps them in stock. If, if we proceeded with the project, my intent was always to find a place to store those, so that if we do have a, a light that goes down within the district, I don't have to wait on a special order and I don't have to go out of pocket to have, to order something to just put it on the shelf for that eventuality. In the Old Town, oh, go ahead.
No, I, I appreciate that. Uh, I am frustrated, uh, with the process because some of us recommended significantly less expensive lights that we thought would be more easily available back when we started on this. And the rationale why those fixtures were picked, because supposedly PGE was going to have them in stock forever, all the time, whenever we needed one. And, and so even though they were almost twice the expense of some of the alternatives we looked at, the rationale was that there was reason to do so. Now we're being told that, well, that isn't going to be true anymore and, and, uh, so we're faced with these kind of decisions, but that's my frustration.
So I, I can only speak for what I'm dealing with from this point forward. Um, I can tell you the cobalt blue is, it's, it's not a color anyone keeps on inventory. None of my lighting, um, uh, reps that I deal with, uh, has those in stock. PGE has acorn lights in stock. They're just not cobalt blue.
So they got to be powder coated?
Uh, yeah. It's, they're customs. As I, I, the last one that, that got taken down by that traffic accident was a custom order, so I had to order that, um, specify the color, um, and get that supplied. But that's only if the pole goes down. If the light itself, the fixtures, the guts, um, those I can get off the shelf anywhere, but I'd rather just have spare parts on my shelf rather than have to go to a supplier and say, hey, I need the spare parts for an HPS Acorn, um, that was constructed 14 years ago, can you order those for me? I've got those on hand.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarification. Um, counsel, other questions? Counselor Akval?
Um, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I think this is an exciting project and it'll be great to, um, have that phase one by the end of the year. Something good from 2020, right? So, um, I just wanted to, to clarify because in our packet, it says the overall rebate for phase one will be, it was like 65,812. Is that the figure that you had in your PowerPoint?
Yes, ma'am, it is. 65,812, yeah.
Okay, okay.
The annual energy savings is 77,336.
I see. And that is then, because in our packet also it said that the energy, um, consumption was going to be reduced by 67%?
That is correct.
Which sounded, I mean, that's terrific because it's not just, just the money, it's also what we're using, you know, the resources we're using too. Um, but that 67% equals in this year, the $77,000.
That is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Incidentally, when we go to phase two, the energy consumption will increase more. There are more lights and, um, the wattage change from current to future is going to be a, a bigger range of change, so we're anticipating a larger So we're anticipating a larger savings for Phase Two.
Oh, cool, thank you.
All right, any other questions? This item is on our consent, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's a consent item, so, you know, if you've got any questions, now's the time. Otherwise, it's up or down on consent unless somebody wants to remove for discussion. And I'm not hearing any particular drive to do that. Okay, I think we're good, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
That brings us to a contract on our Backyard Habitat and Friends of Trees, which is set up currently as also a consented item on a sole source contract. Mr. Rappold?
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
All right, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Kerry Rappold, Natural Resources Manager. And tonight, yes, I'll be presenting a very brief presentation on sole sourcing with two of our Habitat Restoration Partners. Next slide. So we've been working with both of these organizations, one for two years and the other actually for 18 years. Backyard Habitat Certification Program and Friends of Trees. And I'll talk a little bit more about those in the next two slides. Basically, the ORS states that we can pursue sole sourcing if we're able to demonstrate that one of these items is met. And as you've seen with the staff reports that were submitted, we're saying that Items A and D actually are being addressed in terms of sole sourcing with both of these organizations. And that's in regards to the fact that they, you know, we want to continue working with these organizations in terms of the services that they provide. And really, they're unique organizations. We really couldn't find anybody else or really want to work with someone else that provides what they do in terms of working with the public, our residents, organizing volunteers and doing all the various things that they're involved with. Next slide, please. So the Backyard Habitat Certification Program, we started a partnership with them back in 2018. They've been in the process of expanding their role within the metro regional area. And Clackamas County was one of the areas that they expanded into. And so we were very happy that we had the opportunity to actually become a partner. Basically, what they do is they work with property owners that have land that's less than one acre. We also have an opportunity to work with the Soil and Water Conservation District on properties that are greater than an acre, just to let you know. And so they provide technical assistance and incentives to these property owners in terms of helping them determine what's the best approach to providing more habitat with, with their properties. And so a lot of what they do really corresponds very closely to what we do with Bee stewards and also our Bee Cities USA designation in regards to pollinator habitat and how that fits with other types of habitat we see in the community. To date, over the past two years, they've been able to enroll 28 properties in the program. And they've actually been able to certify three of those properties. These are photos of two of those landowners that have participated in the program. So we eventually hope that these other 25 will get their properties certified. They're actively engaging the community and adding more members in terms of people that are enrolled in the program. So over a three-year period, we'd like to budget 8,500 a year for the program, which will bring you to, brings us to that total of 25,500. Next slide, please. Friends of Trees, we've had a very long partnership with them. It's 18 years now with the Green Spaces Program. You're probably aware that we started a year ago or a little over a year ago, a program too called the Neighborhood Trees. And so the combination of those two really, you know, brings us the full package in terms of what Friends of Trees has to offer. And so we've had a lot of great volunteer events with this organization over the years, thousands of people that have participated, also thousands of native trees and plants that we've been able to install with the Green Space Program. And so that's been a variety of habitats that we've dealt with in Memorial Park, Tranquil Park, the Beckman Creek Corridor. We've actually done, you know, bee pollinator habitat with the program in Memorial Park. And so we'd like to basically fully fund them at this point. We've been limited in the past where we can only do it up to 10,000 a year. And as you can imagine, as they add more and more acres every year, there's more maintenance that we work with in terms of those sites. And they do a great job in terms of maintaining those and working with us and our Parks and Rec Department. So basically, it's going to vary between about 14,000 to 15,000 a year and bring us to a total of about 45,000 in terms of what we're committing to Friends of Trees. Ultimately, these three-year contracts will be really important to the organizations because it gives them the continuity they need in terms of budgeting future years. And it just allows them to be able to plan in a way which is much more effective. So that's why we're here tonight, or I'm here tonight, to, to give you this information and hopefully get your approval for the sole sourcing. The next step in terms of the process, if you approve it tonight, is that we would put a notice out in the Daily Journal of Commerce indicating that's what we intend to do. Once that goes through the seven-day period, then we would work with legal in terms of the contracts for these two organizations and then get that finalized. Some available for any questions that you might have?
Very good. Council, questions for Mr. Rappold on these two programs? Neither is a new program, they're ones that we've been working in for several years in both cases. Councilor West?
Is Friends of Trees, an organization like, let's say, my tree, my ash in my front yard that I'm looking at right now as we're in this meeting, it gets a bug, it dies, it, it needs to be replaced, it has to be replaced. Don't they provide like an approved list that's good for the region and for the life of the habitat, of the urban habitat, that people choose from like an extensive list and then they can plant what's appropriate for their parking strip? Is that, that's also what this entails, correct? And they come and plant it for you?
Yeah, that would be more specific to the Neighborhood Tree Program in terms of that they provide as far as, you know, appropriate trees, appropriate, appropriate list. The work we do, that I do specifically with the Green Space Program is focused more on our parks and our native habitat. And so it just depends on the, the trees that, or plants that we put in there. Basically, what type of habitat are we addressing?
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Everybody good to go? Councilor Akable?
Yes, I just make a comment because this is on consent tonight, correct? I, I think this is a good project. I don't see our need of caring for pollinators magically disappearing in the next three years, right? So this seems like a, a logical continuation of the values that, that council is supporting.
Thank you.
Councilor, Landville, please.
I just have more of a procedural funding question that maybe Brian can speak to. This is obligating budgets in fiscal years, two years beyond where, where we are at the current time. And I'm wondering about just precedent in that and if there are any problems that, that the council needs to be concerned about.
Other than what you just articulated, no. I mean, it's, it's giving them a long-term commitment, which I think they need to have so that they can plan appropriately for staffing levels and for resources and everything that they do for their jobs. From my perspective, it's a very small investment in our overall tree program and, and everything we're doing in our parks. So it's not anything that I'm thinking is going to be a problem down the road from a budgetary standpoint. Of course, every year that we go through the budget process, you know, there's a justification for every program budget. So if we got to the point where we had to, you know, cut things, then, you know, this would be one of the many programs and services that we deliver that we would have a, you know, take a close look at. But I don't, I don't see us having that issue in the next three years.
So just, so I'm clear, for our resolution that is on the consent agenda, are we, we are authorizing the execution of a sole source selection? Or are we obligating it for the three years, or is it both?
It's, it's both, basically. You're, you're, you're stating that we're in compliance with those ORS requirements and that you're authorizing the sole sourcing, which will be for that three-year period of time. And then we'll have to work through...
I just want to be clear what we're saying here. What you're really approving is the sole source. You're adopting the findings for the sole source. Budget decisions are made on an annual basis. If we had to back out of any contract, we would have those discussions. We would give folks plenty of time to adjust. We did that with the, the water, I'm, I'm trying to remember the name. We, we were part of the Regional Water Consortium and I think we backed out of that. We allowed them to continue funding for the rest of that fiscal year, but made it clear that we weren't going to do that going forward. Ironically, we just got back into that agreement, so. Well, we can make those adjustments as we need to. I guess that's the point I'm trying to make.
Okay, sounds like we're good for tonight then. Thank you, Mr. Rappold, appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council.
Okay, and we're down to about 20 minutes to do two items that are listed at 10 minutes. We're going to have to try to stay on target here. The next one up is the missing middle housing contract award and project update. Mr. Pollitt?
Thank you, Mayor, Dan Pollitt, Planning Manager. So I'm happy to provide an update on the middle housing project. And also on the regular session agenda tonight, you have a contract award related to it. So House Bill 2001, two primary things it does is require cities, in Wilsonville's case, to allow duplexes and all lots to allow single family and also allow other middle housing such as triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses in areas zoned for single-family residential. So this project has to do with that. It's also a continuation of our Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. There's specific action items in the strategic plan that this is carrying forward. So this was asked in front of council in, back in November, where they gave support for a grant application. And since then, we've been able to secure that grant funding, which we previously shared with council, and began the preliminary work, including a lot of staff work on auditing the code as it relates to that, the House Bill and expected rules. And relating to those rules, we've also been heavily involved in state rulemaking, which can have a big impact on how we carry this out. We've also worked to solicit the bids and selected a consultant, and which is Angelo Planning Group, supported by Sarah Architects and ECO Northwest, which we feel will be a money well spent, a great team. And beyond that, we're also getting started. And we look forward to getting them going and moving forward and helping us with the code audit and other technical work. So next steps is that technical work and once that comes on board, we'll be doing a number of work sessions with the Planning Commission later this year and then be coming, reporting back to the council on a work session in January about some of the technical aspects of this work and auditing the code and master plans and a number of other related items. Also this fall, we're doing pre-work in, for the outreach for planning in early 2021, particularly looking to do a broader outreach than some other projects and building on the successes of outreach that we've had and continuing to expand what we're doing. So that is the update I have. We're excited about this work, continuing forward the work of Equitable Housing and, and getting this middle housing figured out in a way that works best for Wilsonville. So happy to answer any questions.
So I would like to, thank you, Mr. Pollitt. I'd like to ask you, just for the clarification of council, is it correct that absent us taking action to do our own analysis and make our own proposal within the framework of the rules, that the state will impose on us their particular solution, whether or not we think it fits our particular situation?
Right, they, they have developed or are adopting a model code that will apply to any jurisdiction that doesn't meet a deadline by the end of 2021 to adopt their own code implementing the House Bill 2001 middle housing requirement.
So I personally, and I hope council would agree, I think that we're much better off doing our analysis and figuring out how to fit within the program that has been passed by the state legislature to the, to the greatest advantage for our community in Wilsonville and not just sitting back and saying, yeah, we'll do whatever they tell us to do, which I don't think is, is really the appropriate method. So going forward and taking the initiative means we have to have the kind of work done that is contemplated in this, in this proposal. And there'll be multiple other steps to do, but this kind of gets us off the starting line and, and moving down the road on it. Questions from Pollitt then? Councilor Akable?
Thank you, and I agree with those previous comments. It's important for us to be doing this work and pushing it forward, given, I guess, that, that broader context of what's going on with the requirements with House Bill 2001. I did want to ask, and perhaps this might be a question for our, our city manager as well, when, you know, this, the, the packet, the presentation here refers back to the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. And when council approved that plan, there was discussion that was actually kind of, I think, instigated in some ways from the Planning Commission's approval of that and recommendation, I guess, recommendation of that. And that they kind of, they had a interest or a joint recommendation to do work considering a DEI group that would look at housing needs in a board or a commission or some sort of group along those lines. So I just kind of wanted an update of, of where that might be and how that might interact with the plans we have in front of us now, looking at the middle housing.
Not sure I, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to get to the last part of your question, but to talk about progress on the DEI, we are working on, have been discussing with a small handful of folks, the concept of having a virtual town hall on DEI, diversity, equity and inclusion. One of those components would be housing, of course, but there are other things that folks are interested in, specifically law enforcement, transparency, things of that nature, how all of our programs and services are received by our different communities that we have in Wilsonville. So that's more of a kind of, a, a drill-down look at everything we do in terms of diversity, equity and inclusion, including which we have 13% of our population that is Latinx. So we have a lot of work to do on that end. There's an even higher proportion of school-aged children in the Latinx demographic. So I, this is more of a global kind of everything that we do look. Housing is one of those issues that would be plugged into that. Assuming that there is some kind of a standing committee of the city to, to deal with those issues, that would just be one of the issues that they would filter through and look at and provide advice to council on. I'm not sure if that answered your question. It's, it's hard for me to say with specificity, because right now it's just all kind of, we're in discussion mode right now.
It's in progress, I guess.
It is in progress, definitely.
And it sounds like...
And I would assume that we would probably have some recommendation for council in quarter one of 2021. That would be my guess in terms of how things play out and how long it takes to kind of go through that process.
Okay, that's helpful. And also I noticed in the packet, there was reference to the, the work specifically with the Latinx community, which I believe we have a grant to do outreach around housing specifically with that population, correct? So that's going to get wrapped into this middle housing needs work as well?
That's correct, it, it is. That's among our next steps, I didn't go into great detail on. We're working with a potential community organization that will lead that effort for us, funded in a large part by that Metro grant. So that is part of this middle housing work. So we will be, that outreach that we're preparing for this fall is kind of laying the foundation for the outreach, including focused on the Latinx community and other communities of color that historically have been marginalized. So that is very much part of this project.
Good, thank you.
Other questions? Not seeing any, and we are on a little tight timeline here. So I think we're ready to go forward, sir. So I think we're ready to go forward, sir. Thank you very much for your presentation. And the item up is this Frog Pond Ridge, and I asked how to pronounce this, Ms. Cindy's last name, and I still didn't get it.
Luke, it's Luke Shoy.
Luke Shoy.
Luke Shoy. See, I'm still struggling. It's Luke Shoy.
Luke Shoy. All right. Well, we'll try to remember that. Please.
All right. So in the interest of time, I'll be really brief tonight. Good evening, Mayor Knapp and councilors. I'm Cindy Luke Shoy, Associate Planner. And tonight at a public hearing, I will be presenting ordinances 842 for annexation and 843 for zone map amendment, as well as zoning order DB 20-8 for the Frog Pond Ridge subdivision during the council public hearing. Frog Pond Ridge is a 71-lot subdivision in Frog Pond West. And it's the fourth subdivision in the master plan area following Morgan Farms, Stafford Meadows, and Frog Pond Meadows. And at their August 31, 2020, meeting, the Development Review Board unanimously approved with conditions the Frog Pond Ridge application. And they also recommended to council adoption of the annexation and zone map amendment. And I'm here at work session just to answer any questions you might have before the public hearing. And with that, thank you.
Counsel, questions? We did have a email, I think everybody got from a member of the community who was asking about possibly deferring this item because of concerns about how we were implementing some of our middle housing intentions coming out of our committee. Can you comment on that, or should we go back to somebody else for a comment on that?
We did respond to, well, actually, Dan Pollitt, Planning Manager, provided some background to you, Mayor and councilors. And we actually got a comment from Mr. Pryor with the, for the DRB hearing as well and have responded to him a couple of times. If Dan could come back on just briefly, I think he can give you a little bit more background or on that.
Thank you.
So, I mean, there is some components of it that we did hear Mr. Pryor's comments prior to even the council receiving them. With the smoke shut down and vacations, we haven't had time to really circle at staff and discuss it. But it is something that we would like to discuss to, you know, give it the light to see if there is something that's potentially a way to enhance our staff reports when we do review residential subdivisions. That said, in this case, there's only really one option for the rezoning that's consistent with the conference of plan, as well as the subdivision approval in this case has actually already been done contingent on the council's action. And the call-up and appeal periods have lapsed. And so, I mean, he brings up some points to discuss, but really, at this point, it doesn't seem on point for the decision that the council is making tonight, but certainly something that we will continue to engage on and discuss.
So thank you for that perspective. I appreciate that. Counselor Lindvile, question?
Well, I think Mr. Pryor's comments, and I will just say this in, probably when we do the public hearing, but I think he brings a good point in that as we start to deal with the subdivisions and recognizing, I understand that in Frog Pond West, the master plan and all of these decisions have been approved in advance. But as we do this, it seems to me that it is prudent for us to make sure that our decisions and the decisions, recommendations that are made by the Development Review Board and the Planning Commission are congruent with our policy that was approved in Resolution 2820, which was the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. And I think that's all he's asking is, can we look at this for congruence with that Equitable Housing Strategic Plan? And is that an affordability analysis? Because that was a high on the list of priorities in that plan. And as we get these housing and these developments that come forward, are we looking at those issues or have we just put that policy up on the shelf and it's going to come into play maybe a later date or some other time? So I think it's something to keep forward and to make sure that we keep, if we've approved that and we have priorities in the housing that we look at it as we have developments come before us.
Okay. Any further comments? All right. I think we're good for the moment, then. Thank you, staff, very much. Appreciate it. And that is all of our scheduled work. Mr. Cosgrove, anything else we should know?
Counselor Lindvile has a question.
We have another item on the consent agenda that has to do with the water system risk and resilience assessment and emergency response plan. Is that still, we haven't had anything in the work session related to that. Is that still on the consent agenda?
I believe it is. Mr. Cosgrove?
Yeah, it was just considered routine. If you have questions, I could have Delora chime in. We didn't think it merited discussion during work session. If you have questions, we can answer them at the regular meeting.
Is there any questions staff needs to respond to? Or we got, I don't see any questions. They'll be on our consent. All right. I think we're ready to wrap here for work session. By any of our protocol, we stay on this connection and come back after a few minutes?
Yep. Give yourself a five-minute break.
Okay. Five minutes and stay on the connection, come back. We'll see you soon. Pull us out of work session at 6:58.
Wow. That's the first time in a long time.